Hello, Miriam.
Hi, Nathan.
How are you?
Hi, Deacon.
Hey. Well, no quorum yet.
No, not even close. Now here's Jeff. I know Michael will be here probably.
I'm sure. I mean, that would give us a quorum.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we can't, we kind of just have Jake make us with the quorum.
That's right. We'll have to talk to the Attorney General about that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to talk to the Attorney General about that. We take issue with that.
I don't want that kind of responsibility to make a quorum, so it's all good.
That's what, that's what you signed up for, Jake.
Oh, I know. Just, I'm a quorum maker. That's what I do. I just run around making quorums.
You know, making, making quorums and making big decisions.
That's right.
Well, there's Michael.
Ray and Robert, too.
Robert, too. Good. I know Linda's not coming.
Okay.
So where's, where's, well, well, the only regular member of the planning board not here is Steve.
Penny will remind Steve.
Pardon?
Penny will remind Steve to attend the meeting, so he should be coming along pretty soon.
And Linda said she couldn't come.
Yes.
Yeah.
So before we start, we need to dragoon someone into taking minutes. Nathan has, I think we've reached a limit with Nathan.
You know, I, you know, once I get caught up, I would, I would jump in again and, you know, pass it around as needed until we get a clerk, but for now, I'm too behind and I need to catch up.
Um.
Michael, why don't you do it and then you won't have to edit them?
You never know, Jeff. I still might. Um, yeah, I'll begrudgingly do it this time. I think I'll just, if it's okay with you guys, I'll just, if someone could send me the recording, I'll go from there.
Plus, I need the recording, Michael.
Great.
Okay, okay.
Hey, Nathan.
Yeah.
I want to see your whole head.
You know, I have this issue with my camera.
Oh, it wasn't just that you have your head?
If that was a, yeah, something, something's going on with my camera. I don't know what it is, so that's just the way it is.
Wow.
If that's the worst of my technical difficulties, then I'm doing all right.
So, well, I guess it balances out because usually we don't see all of Deacon's head, so it's working tonight.
Ashley's coming in. You, you can suffer it all now. So I'll open the meeting. We don't have to read the governor's notice anymore. We do need to note that it is being recorded. The, the first thing I, I'd like to do is, is welcome our new associate members. This is, this has been a long haul. And I'm very glad they're here.
Yes. Agreed.
Yes, all right.
So, so just so the associates know, you, your attendance is not required at meetings. It's, you know, it's kind of, you know, you don't count towards a quorum, at least not until we maybe file some legislation to change that, but. So your attendance is optional. I, I think it's great if you're here to learn how the planning board operates and familiarize yourself with how we do things, but. Anyway, if, if it's ever a choice between a planning board and some other thing, you know, you.
That's good to hear. I, I have a lot going on over here, so it's good to know that I don't have to be there every time if, and I understand if there's a special permit and I'm on it, I will be.
Yeah, and just to clarify two things, and one, I, we've probably mentioned this when you guys first presented, but just to follow up on what Jeff said, when we wrote the bylaw originally, the idea was to have associate members be able to participate in a range of things that we needed a quorum for. So if we were having, say we were passing a new zoning bylaw and we had a hearing, but we didn't have enough people, or, um, I don't, I don't know, we just needed a quorum.
Michael, just tonight's example, Linda can't make the meeting.
Yeah, well, we have a quorum, so it's, it's okay, but if we didn't. Um, and then the Attorney General came back and basically approved the associate member bylaw, but said that you guys could only participate for special permits, which we wholeheartedly think was wrong, and Jeff's gonna report about that later. But at least for now, since the Attorney General has a little bit more oomph than us, we're sort of limited to the special permit part. And then the other thing I was just gonna mention, I, I mean, although I was the original author, I can't remember, but I think the idea was, you know, that we wanted associate members to participate, so it's not like, you know, you need to be quiet. You know, it's just that in terms of decision-making and things like that, you won't have an actual role, but I, it's all I've, I've found in this realm of public service, none of us grew up doing this stuff, so it's always, you know, you show up at a meeting saying, can I talk? Can I not talk? When is it appropriate? So I think we had, we had wanted it so that, you know, the participation is the acknowledgement of the chair, but, you know, in terms of you understanding and maybe asking questions and stuff, that it wasn't that you had to stay silent. Is that correct? Did I remember that correctly, you guys?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, I'm, but.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the chair, I think the chair would be free to make a policy that says that associates can speak freely, just as if they were members. I mean.
Yes, I'm pretty, I'm pretty tough, though. I, I don't.
I know you rule with an iron hand, but.
So, um, let's move on to public comment. So if there's anyone here who needs to leave early or wants to talk, and wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda, this is a good time to speak up.
Do we know who the Zoom user is?
Nathan?
Probably Leslie, me.
Oh, hi, Leslie.
How are you?
Hi, Zoom user.
Yeah. Well, well, I'll, I'll figure that no one wants to make public comment right at the moment, so. I had hoped that when I wrote the agenda, I, I put, I put the open space stuff down for 7:45 and hoped that that Penny would be here for the Wheelock review, too, but I don't know if we should open up the Wheelock stuff before, before she gets here or not. I would note that.
There's not much to report on Wheelock, as, as we've all seen from, from, from Tim's email, so that's not gonna be a long topic. I think the thing we have to figure out is whether we want to do a field trip before the spring out there to see what they've done with the road already.
Yeah. So.
Now, when you read the note from Tim Garcia, did, did you understand him to say that the ditches had already been done or not? The language was a little unclear.
I, I left a phone message for him last week. And he's emailing in response to the phone message I left for him. And my understanding of his email was that the ditches and the, the basin were, were going to be done in the spring, but they've already done some stuff with the road already.
Right, but when I read it, I really wasn't sure. I mean, I, I mean, it just wasn't 100% clear to me. I could see where you could read it either way.
Huh, okay. Let me read it again. Let me find it. And read it again.
Okay, well, so, well, let's just keep going on Wheelock. I mean.
Oh, oh, okay, so here's what, here's what he says. "Just to provide an update to you all as to where we are at, the road, the roads have been regraded. With ditch work and basin work is expected to be done after winter in order to safely do the work." So it sounds like they've already done the road, and they're saving those other two things until after winter. To me.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have the text in front of me, but I, it seemed like the, the comma was sort of questionable about what, what he meant, but.
Well, it says, here's, "As to where we are at, comma, the roads have been regraded, comma. With ditch work and basin work is expected to be done after winter in order to safely do the work."
You're probably right, but.
Yeah. I think, I think all they've done is, is roadwork and do the other two things in the spring.
Yeah, yeah.
That, so do we have a sense of what's preferred in the spring? Should it be, you know, later in the spring, after all the melting has occurred? Or, I mean, do we have a recommendation for what spring looks like earlier or late?
Probably, probably April or May, you know, once the worst of the winter is over. Probably better, better in May, because it rains less in May, or it used to.
Yeah, I mean, my, my always, I, I think that makes sense. My only sense is that if there's gonna be issues with water runoff and erosion, that it'll probably just not be good this spring as well as all the ice and snow melts. I don't know if, if Miriam, if you have any water flow thought, but I don't know if there's a, it seems silly to have them fix it while everything's wet, but if we wait till April or May, we'll probably experience sort of more water. Just making it worse before they fix it. Does that make sense? Miriam, did you have thoughts?
Um. No, as long as, you know, they're using erosion controls and you guys are perhaps asking to check erosion controls, make sure that they were in place and they're sufficient. You could ask them to put the erosion controls in first and then have you go out and take a look before they do the work. If they're doing new conveyances or new storm structures, I guess one of the questions I have is making sure that they're outside of buffer zones so that they don't need to go through any permitting with the CONCOM.
I think all of that original stuff was.
It was all outside of the buffer zones, but if they're doing new things, like if they're adding more structures, I think it's worth confirming that, that they're staying out of the buffer zones.
Well, it, it sounds like everything they're doing, you know, road, ditches, basin, is, is all existing infrastructure. I, I don't think they're, they're making forays into new, new, new territory. They're just gonna work on what they've got. So I, I think if, if they were out originally, they're still out.
Yeah. I just, I thought I remember when they had the engineer come to one of your meetings that they were gonna sort of investigate that large basin that's holding water and see if they can repair it, and if they couldn't repair it, then they would have to go to a Plan B.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding was they decided to try to get it to function as infiltration basin or a retention basin, which just fills up and then flows out the bottom. And that means mucking out all the sediment that got in there when the project was first being built. And then hoping that the subsoil is permeable enough to do that. I, I think that's what they're gonna try first. How, how they're gonna do that will be interesting to see, especially if it's got water in it all the time. They, they may have to, they may have to drain it with pumps to get in there, dry it all out.
Scuba equipment.
So Jeff, do you want to just follow up with them and tell them we're thinking late spring would be okay?
Yeah, like, like May-June, when it's getting dryer. Yeah.
Yeah.
After the April showers.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I can do that.
Right.
Okay. You made mention of site visit, Jeff?
Um, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm probably the only thing that, that, that we would want to do it at this point, if we wanted to do it, is, is, is go out there and because they have, they have done some roadwork. And if we want to go out there and look at that, then we should probably go out there pretty soon. That, that's if, if we deem it necessary.
Is it possible you could just sort of get their blanket approval? We could just go up there on our own?
Probably not. These guys are different than, than their, their predecessors. But I, I can, I can ask.
Okay, I mean, it might be less, I mean, if he's coming from Florida, they might actually appreciate that, but I guess there's the Lemonster guy, or the Lunenburg guy.
Yeah, Jeff Walker.
Uh, yeah, that, that would be reasonable. I mean, that, that would be like a half a day for him, so that's not difficult. Okay, let, let me ask about that.
So do, um, Miriam?
Yeah, just a quick question. I had raised a request that they remove the silt fences that are outside the fencing from the construction, and they said they were gonna do it. I, I don't know if they've communicated with you about whether they've done it or not. I'm wondering if you could go back with them and ask whether they've done it.
Where would those silt fences be? Like, on, on, on the eastern side?
Let me think about that. Yes, on the eastern side, sort of in, near the corner where Reed Road, you know, that section, if you go uphill from the, the batteries and towards Reed Road, there was, I don't know if there's silt fences elsewhere, but I saw the silt fences there outside of the metal fencing.
Okay.
And it's obviously not serving any purpose and it's just a barrier for wildlife.
Okay, I'll ask him about that as well.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay. Any more talk on, on this topic? Okay, well, let, let's move on to the, to the open space.
Are we not doing the apartment query?
Well, I mean, unless.
No one's here.
Pardon?
No one's here to query us.
Well, yes, and I, I put him on the agenda because you, you said I was going to, and.
Because I put it, because Jeff said we should.
Yeah, well, well, you're, I, I, I just did what you said, Michael, and put him on the agenda, and I didn't know if he would show up or not, so.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can skip over him if he isn't here.
Yeah, I agree. And it is, it is the time, so that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on to open space. Hi, Penny.
Hi, everyone. How do you want to run this, Deacon?
Well, I, I assume that, that people have read your summary and have some questions or thoughts. Do you, do you wanna, do you want to say a little about, about the overall summary and what?
Yeah, well, I'll certainly explain what the goal of this was, so I think some of you know that for the past just over a year ago, Fleischer and I, along with a staff, a couple of staff people at FERCOG, have been working to update our open space plan, which expired in 2019. And there are two reasons to do this. One, it's just good to periodically go back and see what we all think about open space and recreation in town. But it also, once you have a state-approved plan, you can apply for a variety of grants that have to do with either open space or recreation in town. So part of our goal is to get the plan approved and apply for some funds to do some of the actions that are in the plan. So the plan is posted, the whole plan, it's 180 very dense pages, and you might want to read it at bedtime. But what my goal in sending out the actions to all the various boards and, and staff people in town who are listed as a responsible board or group in the action plan was to try to make sure that we have buy-in from the people who actually have to implement the many pieces. So the Open Space Committee is listed for many of these, Conservation Commission is listed for many of these, Select Board for many of them, and, and it turns out the, the planning board is listed for a number of them as well. And so my goal tonight is just get, to get feedback from you as a board to see if you're on board with these items, if you think they should be worded differently, if you think they're a bad idea, or possibly do you have other action items that you think would fit into the plan? So I, I guess what I would suggest is going through one by one the action items that are connected to the planning board and to see what you think. Does that seem reasonable?
Seems reasonable to me.
Okay, so, so there are four overarching goals.
Hey, Penny, can I jump in for a minute?
Yep.
Well, besides the fact that whoever's chatting should put on mute, that would be good. Let's see. It was Leslie. So my, my only general comment, which I wanted to say upfront, because it might just repeat, but it, a lot of this stuff, I think, is all contingent on if we hit, get hit with a tsunami of special permits for solar, because that takes out our capacity to do pretty much anything. So just knowing that we might have really good intent, but if we get slammed, we're gonna get slammed.
Right, and, and just to put it in context, the plan is good for seven years, so my God, I hope any solar permits, special permits do not last seven years, so, so we'll, we'll see where things go with that. Okay, so the first major goal is to protect Chute's Berry's natural resources, clean air, clean water, and large forest blocks, and under that, I don't know, I, I personally hate reading things out loud, but the first action that has the planning board listed is actually the first action in the plan. It says, "Use the criteria for open space protection, available land conservation tools, the technical support of UMass Extension GIS data and analysis, blah, 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 to develop criteria the town can use to identify priority areas to conserve when exercising its right of first refusal for land coming out of chapter one." And the planning board is listed as one of the responsible groups for implementing that, along with open space, Conservation Commission, Select Board, and the CPA.
Penny, I had one little edit suggestion that is in that section, but it's over in the left-hand column, A1. After natural, after the comma, I, I would add scenic and comma.
This is at the goal level, not at the objective level you're talking about.
Right, it's, it's, it's the bold text, you know, prioritize protection of land that contains, it's important to move to a natural.
Oh, I see.
I would add scenic, recreational and cultural, because we get to scenic a little farther down, but I, I would recommend putting it in there.
Okay, I have added that.
So I have a question, Penny, and I think this came up, well, it just came up recently through the CPC. Because, you know, there's the, the land on Pellon Hill near Jeff's house that's under consideration. And, you know, the conversation that the CPC had was that as a committee, we weren't in the position to say we should proceed or not. We really looked to the CONCOM and open space and recreation to sort of say this is a priority area. And it feels a parallel in the planning board for that role. Like, I think we can use criteria for open space, but in terms of identifying priority areas, I don't know if that's with, really within the purview of the planning board. Like we say, it's appropriate or not, but I don't know if we do the prioritization part.
Well, just to step back a bit, right now, there is no prioritized plan for the town for protecting any developable land in town. And so we put this as the first, first, let's see, the language always gets me confused, the first objective under the first goal, because. Because it seems like to be poised to take advantage of a parcel of land that becomes available. You should be able to look at it and say, yes, this is high priority or not. And so we don't have that in place right now.
Yeah, no, I think the action is great. I was just, I was just questioning how much the.
Planning Board needs to be involved.
Yeah.
I, yeah, why don't you guys discuss that and let me know?
Well. In, in, in many cases, let's see. Conservation Commission is appointed by, we, we have Select Board here and Planning Board, they're both freely independently elected boards. Conservation Commission, I think, is, is appointed by Select Board.
Correct.
Community Preservation Committee, are they elected or appointed or?
Represented it. So I, I'm on because I'm Planning Board. So we're appointed technically, but it's because we're members of whatever committee.
Okay, okay, so, so that's how we got on. My point is that. You know, of the boards in town, many of them are creatures of the, of the Select Board, really. Or in the PINCOM's case, the Town Moderator, but the Planning Board is kind of the other freely elected. Board in town. As opposed to the Select Board and. I think Planning Boards in, in, in my history of being a planning consultant, I, they often come from different perspectives in town. So I, I wouldn't shirk from, from any responsibility as a planning board because we are. You know, we have a different perspective than the Select Board necessarily and we should, we should exercise.
But wouldn't we, I mean, my sense, Jeff, is that like we would prioritize. Based on either the master plan or zoning regulations or, you know, things within that. Which say like, we want to do X in this area, or we want to encourage X. Development in this way, but in terms of parcels, we're not necessarily saying one over the other. That's, I guess, what I'm wondering.
So, so Michael, just to clarify. The, the goal of this very first action item is to develop. A set of plans to review things and. It isn't so much that all of these people would weigh in on every parcel that comes through. It's that all of these boards would have an opportunity to weigh in on the strategy, the strategy. Prioritize what the town might want to invest in for open space or recreate.
Okay.
And, and to what you're saying, maybe we put you as. One, two, three, the fifth listed there. But, but, you know.
I'm, I'm okay with it. I, it's, your clarification is fine.
Okay, so is there a consensus that the Planning Board wants to weigh on, weigh in on developing criteria?
Yeah.
Yes. So what's new?
I think, Penny, maybe the best way to go is say, is anyone have a strong objection?
No, I agree, but I have to.
No, you don't. We argue a lot.
I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Okay, so the next one is. Under the same objective, it's continue to work with adjacent towns, land trust, the state. Property owners and by other means to permanently protect parcels identified as having high conservation value. And this, this would be. After the criteria were developed.
Could you argue with that? How could you argue with that?
I don't, I don't think you could and you're, you know, you're fourth in the list on this one.
Oh, are, are, so, so the lists are prioritized with the.
Well, they're not, they're not really, the bolded. The bolded. Would take the lead on these things, at least. Someone has other opinions about that as, as we discuss this with all the various groups.
Okay.
You know, the bottom line is so many boards are so busy that we would take input from anyone who took the time to give it to us. Okay, shall we move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so A2 is the next objective. And this one, I think you do, that your board would weigh in heavily potentially. Use Chutesbury's land use regulation to increase protection of valued. Natural and cultural resources and to support climate change mitigation and adapt, I never can.
Adaptation.
Adaptation strategies. So just to step back for a minute, one of the bigger changes in this. Open space and recreation plan update is that climate change. Is a required feature by the State Board that reviews these plans. So you'll see that. Statements like A2. Inserted at various places along the way. So the first action under A2 is revive the proper protocol for notifying relevant town bodies. Of a property sale subject to chapter sixty-one, right of first refusal. And my impression is that that process has sort of fallen by the wayside. In the past handful of years. I don't know if your board is, was or is notified when property comes out of chapter sixty-one.
We used to be.
We used to be, when I was on the Conservation Commission, we used to be as well.
So the town assessor is, is the lead here when.
We don't really get notifications either.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, well, you know, what I, I have talked with Kevin about this a little bit, our assessor. And he tells what I have learned, and Leslie, you may know more about this than I do, is that. They often don't find out. About this until there's a purchase and sale agreement in hand. And so it's really late for trying to. You know, if it's a high priority parcel, it's kind of late to. Act many times.
So this sounds like a good one, revive the proper protocol.
Yeah.
Whatever's going on now.
Right, but Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, the assessor's office doesn't even find out.
We don't, it, it's, it should be initiated at the time of sale by the attorneys and they just don't notify us. And, you know, it's a hard statute to understand. I read and reread that UMass booklet and. I don't know what, what do we do to, we don't know when things are gonna sell. But we, you know, if the property owner doesn't take responsibility, I don't think there's any consequence to not letting us know.
Well, doesn't the Select Board have to sign off?
What, Deacon?
Doesn't the Select Board have to sign off on the first refusal?
We never hear about it until the sales already occurred.
Well, so it's like this is something that needs some work.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not within our community, it's within the statute itself. We never get notifications.
Isn't there someplace, Penny, later on, we, we talked about like working with state officials? To advocate for stuff, it seems like the process is, you know. If we're supposed to have right of first refusal and we don't know until after the fact, then the system's broken.
Correct.
But they can't, but they can't actually transfer the property without the Select Board signing off, can they?
The Select Board doesn't even know that there's a sale going on. We don't know till we see it in the Registry of Deeds. Yeah, technically, the attorneys or the property, the seller is supposed to notify the town, but they never do.
Question, the. When, when, when the wording is revive notification regarding chapter sixty-one. Did we once have a protocol that was being followed as far as notification?
Oh, well, I, all I can say is that I was on the Conservation Commission for twenty some odd years. And until perhaps. The last handful of years, the conservation would get, and I assume other boards would also get. Notified when a property in chapter sixty-one was about to be sold. And some, and I, I don't know what has changed in the past few years.
I, I was glancing at a winum. Kind of winum, either bylaw regulation where the winum Select Board passed a detailed protocol. Requiring that a certain sequence of notification take place and it seems like. The winum process might be something we consider.
I think that's a good idea and I think there may be a pro, a protocol on the books. I, I think part of it is just. It's fallen apart at this point. And as Leslie's saying, it, it's a challenging one if the town isn't notified.
But we know all the land and chapter, right? It's just a matter of communicating with them on a regular basis in advance.
Well, so maybe that's part of what it is, is. Education and reminding.
They sign their acknowledgements each year for recreation and every ten years for forestry and every year for. But I, I almost wonder if there's been some case law or something. It seems to me it's more at the. The attorney's level or something like that. The, the letters we used to get when I was on Select Board Secretary was. Would come from the attorneys, the seller's attorneys.
So it sounds like some research needs to be done on that.
I'd be interested in seeing, seeing this winum. Document. That I, I don't see what power we have after the fact. We don't know who the attorneys are that are. Involved in the sales, they, they just don't send them anymore.
So it's, it sounds like we need to, you know, understand. How the law works. You know, what, what recourse does the town have? If a parcel is, if a sale takes place on a parcel that's in chapter sixty-one. And the town is not notified or doesn't, you know.
Yeah, I think starting by reading that UMass booklet, which to me is the very best that's available. It's very unclear that we have any power.
Well, they, they do, if, if a parcel is, that's in chapter one, sixty-one is sold. And taken out of chapter sixty-one. A, don't some sort of back taxes come to the town at that point?
That's correct.
And does, is that happening?
Yes.
That happens. Okay. Okay, well, I have a big note on my copy of this table to do some research on this. Do you want to talk about this? Do other people have comments?
Don had his hand up about something.
I'm just wondering where the service forester. That's approving this change of sixty-one, sixty-one A. I'm just wondering where they are in this, shouldn't they be notifying the Conservation Commission?
I don't think, I don't think that's ever been the policy, but maybe they should.
They don't sign off at the time of sale, do they?
I don't.
So I, I think they're in, they're involved up to that point though. Because the, you have to file, when you're gonna get out of sixty-one, you, you're supposed to file with DCR. I, I don't know the answer to this. I, I'm just bringing it up. Thank you.
All right. Question that's slightly off this topic, but I mean, but, but related. I wondered if it wasn't a, a good idea to make up a list of town-owned properties. I mean, there, there are properties that have been seized for taxes that are, that are kind of odd situations and. And it would seem like we, we would want to. For making policy, we would want to know where they are and what was possible.
Well, Deacon, funny you mention that. If you dig through the whole hundred and eighty page plan, every one of those that's currently in. That category are listed. There are lots of them.
Yeah, oh, good, good.
And there, you know, all the, all the town-owned parcels are owned. Are, are listed, all the conservation areas are listed, all of. All of the properties that are in all the various chapters, sixty-ones are listed. Property owned by Amherst Water Supply are listed. State-owned properties are listed, so there are many, many pages of properties that you could dig right into.
Well, that's good, cause it'd be a lot easier to make policy for. Properties the town already owns than for.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's for sure, yeah.
Penny, for the next one?
Yeah.
I think it's great.
Yeah. I don't know if other people have the document in front of them.
I do, I have a little edit, Jeff.
Yeah.
And then the second line after process comma and. I would add zoning in general town bylaw.
So I just want to make sure I am where you are. Are you in the objective or the action?
I'm in the action part.
Okay, let me just see, can you?
So it's, it's the second line, development review process comma, and then it says and. And I would add zoning in general bylaws.
Zoning, okay.
In general town bylaws, just because zoning is a lot of what we do to, to deal with. Those things that are listed thereafter.
Okay. Any other comments?
I only have one, which is sort of just the advertisement that we're gonna talk about the MVP priorities. After this, and I was hoping we could just do it immediately after, but there's a lot of linkage between this document and the MVP list.
Right, and, and many of the things that are in this table. Are here because they're, they're, they're reflected with actions and goals in the MVP. So, how do you want to do this, Michael? I don't really, you know, I don't really have a strong.
I, well, I think you should go through open space and then we can go through MVP. I just wanted to sort of just connect the dots in case. People didn't know the relationship between the two.
Right. And I have to say, Michael, you probably know a lot more about the MVP than I do, but. I've learned some from working on this plan.
Yeah, I think this is one of, this is one of these things that I think, you know, if, if we, even though there's that seven-year window. This is something I think would be good for the Planning Board to sort of. Look at doing if we have breathing room for the solar stuff.
Okay, any more comments on this, that action? Nope. So the next one is revise zoning and subdivision regulations to improve performance standards. For capturing stormwater runoff flowing from impervious surfaces in Lake Wayola District. And I actually am the person who. Came up with that idea because the Conservation Commission. Works. Doesn't work with, tries to resolve so many problems having to do with. The increased development going on around the lake and how that's impacting the movement of stormwater through. Roads and properties and, and ultimately going into Lake Wayola.
Hey, there is a, there is a process. That, that the Planning Board has been engaged with the last couple of meetings with the Zoning Board of Appeals. The, the zoning board has. Which I'm also on, has initiated a conversation with the Planning Board on. which I'm also on, has initiated a conversation with the planning board on what are the best practices for handling the, the demolitions and reconstructions and alterations and extensions of pre-existing nonforming structures around the lake. So we've been talking about that stuff and maybe since we're already have initiated it, maybe some mention of that process should be here so we can get credit for doing it already.
So do you want to send me a statement to include? Other than, I mean, we can craft something here, but I don't know how much of your meeting time you want to take up with this.
Yeah, I can do that because.
And so, so the piece of this that I am particularly interested in, and just to put it in context, people are, people who live around the lake are converting existing cottages into year-round dwellings, which, you know, that's okay, I guess, but as part of that, many of them are putting in paved parking areas or paved patios or increasing the footprint of their building. And so the, the, there are fewer and fewer places for water to seep into the ground as opposed to being sort of channeled into stormwater. I don't know the right word for this. Miriam, can you help me?
Storm conveyances?
Yeah, right. And so, you know, there, there are some really awful places where because people cut down their trees and they pave their driveway and they are really altering the natural landscape, that water is having a hard time finding its way down to the lake and it does it in pretty dramatic ways in some cases. So as you talk about the other parts of zoning around the lake, I hope the planning board would consider looking at that issue as well. I know we've been told, well, when I was on the Conservation Commission, that if people decrease the amount of pervious surface, then you can have them do things like put in rain gardens or, or other alternate water management structures, but I'm wondering if there are some zoning methods that could be applied to this as well.
Yeah. So Penny, I had a couple of thoughts. I mean, I like the idea. The two things related, so sort of jumping ahead to A4, which is sustainably managed stormwater, reduce harm from polluted and erosive runoff, groundwater, surface water, and public and private infrastructure. It seems like stormwater management as a theme connects the two of them. And then connecting those two things to the MVP discussion, and I guess I'll just, I'll take back what I said about doing in succession because I think it's helpful here. So with the MVP process, the select board was, is looking to apply for an action grant by the third week of January, and so they're soliciting priority items that were in the MVP that different committees think are important. One of the things that personally sort of, it's not a planning board thing, but what personally jumps out at me is that, you know, one of the high priority areas was dealing with culverts and just stormwater management in general. So the more, the more climate events we have, we're going to have, you know, lots of volume of water, which creates flooding and therefore stormwater management is an issue. So it seems, so it seems like a possibility would be that just in terms of this, this one, the A2, looking at the regulations, if the select board said, hey, we're going to adjust stormwater as a category for an MVP action grant, then not only can we do some maybe covert stuff, but we could actually hire a consultant to look at some recommendations for regulations. So it's not to substitute this, but I think that since you said it's year one, there, if, if the select board actually went in that direction and looked at stormwater management, that we could maybe hire a consultant to help us, you know, look at regulations.
And Michael, just to clarify, you're, you're talking more broadly than just around the lake, I'm guessing.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I totally hear what you're saying about Lake Wayola. I think we had the pigs and cow discussion a couple of years ago. You know, so it's all related. I mean, things flow into Lake Wayola, so I understand that that's important. But I think generally speaking, the more climate-initiated weather we have, stormwater management is just going to be a theme throughout town.
I agree, I agree with you completely.
I have a question for Penny with respect to the, the Lake Wayola action item. Is there anything, you know, aside from the development trends that, that lends to this action item, like, you know, has there been documented increase in contaminants in the water in the lake or, you know, have, you know, has, has, has damage from runoff been linked to specific development projects or, you know, anything like that?
Miriam has her hands up and she, as someone currently on the CONCOM, she might have some good insight into this.
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts about it, and I just wanted to say we've been talking a lot about stormwater on the CONCOM and we get a lot of, we get a lot of feedback from residents about projects and about concerns around stormwater, not just around the lake. So yes, there are specific areas where development has had resulted in discharges into the lake. And, you know, these are sometimes having to do with stormwater problems on these private roads. The roads don't have the right kind of stormwater detention basins and, and swales and such, and some of it has to do with what Penny's pointing out about, you know, people developing their properties in ways that just shunts the water away from their property, but it has to go somewhere. And so it gets concentrated and ends up overwhelming particular locations. Just a couple of thoughts. One was that we had a conversation at a meeting not too long ago where our DEP official, Mark Stinson, was there. And he said that some towns, for example, have bylaws specific to water protection zones around great ponds and lakes. So there are some bylaw examples out there that create some tools for managing some stormwater issues around lakes. And the other piece I just wanted to throw in there was that the CONCOMs had some conversations recently around stormwater around the town and around culverts, particularly around road maintenance and wanting to reexamine or revisit the idea of having kind of a unified approach to consulting with the highway department and town hall about road repairs and road maintenance and road improvements. There's some tools that we can use for that. We're interested in exploring that.
That's also true with the Lake Wayola District that the highway department is not responsible for maintaining a lot of those.
They're not.
Those private roads, is that true or is that?
They're not because those are private roads. And yet they're owned by the Lake Wayola Association, yet the town owns the lake. So, you know, there's this ring of private roads that affect the quality of the lake that, that we do have a say in. So, you know, it's kind of a confusing process, but I think that there's a place for the town to play a role, even though these are private roads.
And just to clarify what Miriam said, while the town, while the lake owners maintain the road, the town plows those roads. And so one of the things the town requires is that the roads be in adequate shape to be plowed. Whatever that means.
Whatever that means.
Well, I think generally speaking, I'm in support of this action item. I'm just imagining what that town meeting discussion will be, but I think it's. Yes, but I, but I think it's worthwhile keeping on the list.
Right. And I know, I know from talking with Becky Torres, our administrator, and the select board, and Miriam knows this as well, the town does really, really doesn't want to get involved in maintaining those roads, so there's that.
Okay.
Don, I see you have, you've had your hand up.
I was just going to mention that Mark Rivers and the Wayola Association people did approach the CONCOM as Miriam mentioned, it wasn't that long ago, about a month or so ago. And sometime this winter, I'll be advising Mark and we'll be talking probably a larger engineering company. I'm not sure who yet. They're going to approach for an estimate or for a, a bid to come up with a, an action plan for, for stormwater control around the lake. It's going to, you, you know how this goes with Lake Wayola Association. It's a very slow process. Many of the residents that would have a say aren't going to be here. They might return in the spring. Anyways, it's going to be a few months, but I would expect by next summer, there will be something that sort of addresses this whole issue about stormwater and roads around the lake. And I would think that your action item here is going to have a direct bearing on that.
And, and Don, just for clarification, is this just on Lake Drive or is it on the east side of the lake as well?
It, it's around the entire, yeah, exactly. It's around all the areas that approach the lake, the slopes that approach the lake. And I'm not sure how high up they're talking about. I have yet to, to meet with Mark and those guys. I expect it's going to be after the holidays.
Okay, anything else on that particular topic? Okay, then let me zoom down. That, I think the bulk of the things that, that directly involve the planning board were front-end, front-loaded in the plan. I'm just skimming through. Oh, here's another one. This is goal C, which is again, one of the overarching themes of the plan. Enhance recreation opportunities in Chutesbury. And the objective C1 is provide recreation options for residents. Oops, wrong one.
Also an A6.
A6. Did I miss one, Michael?
Um. Yeah, well, we're not, we're, we were in A2 and then the next place we show up is an A6, which is assessing, assessing whether there are roads in Chutesbury where scenic roads overlay zoning district could be appropriate. And then conducted a landscape inventory.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, I have an edit in that one. Okay, so we're on it. All right. So this is in A6 and it's, it talks about scenic roads overlay district, zoning district, appropriate measure to protect. So, and, you know, as I've already said, I think I voiced this opinion to Miriam. Chutesbury doesn't have a, in my opinion, doesn't have a lot of roads that are, that are truly scenic in the classic New England sense. So I, I think we do have some, some nice roads, but and, and some nice undeveloped stretches. So what I would propose is adding a second sentence here that, that goes something like this, expand the definition of scenic road to include longer road segments which are currently undeveloped as house lot. Because those longer segments, and I know there's, there's one down on Pratt Corner, there's certainly one near where I live. There's one near where you live, Penny. You know, they're, they're getting, they're getting rarer, you know, those longer segments of, you know, a thousand feet or more, a couple thousand feet that are undeveloped. So I would propose adding that to, to what we consider to be scenic.
Okay. So expand the definition of scenic roads and can you say again?
Sure. To include longer road segments which are currently undeveloped as house lots.
And how do you, how do you define longer road segments?
Oh. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think.
I, I think you kind of know it when you see it because it stands out from much of our road network, which does have a house every two or 300 feet.
So greater than a thousand feet or are you thinking more than that, Jeff?
Thousand feet is actually pretty good. That's, that's for potential house lots that are not there. I don't know, thousand feet might be.
Okay.
Could I interject something?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess this is all, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. But I know that we've been having these conversations on the historical commission about the idea of a scenic road bylaw and from our perspective, Chutesbury has many scenic roads. Not scenic in the sense of perhaps having open vistas, which I think, or is what probably Jeff is referring to, but scenic in the sense that there are antique stone walls and structures and, and stretches that are forested. So, you know, we've been talking about the dirt roads in Chutesbury being examples of maybe a unique kind of scenic road, perhaps unique to Chutesbury or towns like Chutesbury, but I think they're beautiful. So again, you know, I think maybe a different perspective around defining what scenic is. It doesn't have to be a vista where you can have an open view.
And I don't think Jeff was talking about a vista. I think he was just talking about sections of road that aren't house after house after house.
Yeah, absolutely. But I would say even where there are, there is development where there is existing stone walls along the roads. I mean, I think that's important for preservation.
I do have.
I know from talking with Jeff, one of the things that's challenging in our town is we have many of the stone walls and the trees are not within the town right-of-way, which makes it hard to, to bring any sort of protection to them. Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, I believe those scenic bylaws do pertain to what's in the right-of-way, not outside of it. And some of our right-of-ways are pretty narrow.
You know, listen to this conversation. I mean, I like Jeff's idea about the extended green space, I guess is what I would, the way I think about it. And I totally get Miriam's point. My only question is, I don't know if the solution is a scenic roads overlay district because it seems like there's going to be spots all through town. So there might be another way to sort of approach it than an overlay district. So I, you might want to just change the language so there's more flexibility in the solution.
Yeah, what might you say instead?
Viewshed.
Viewshed?
Well, that's the term that Jeff is actually referring to. Well, it applies to many places, not just one.
Yeah, but, but, but the point I made, you know, to Miriam before, and, and the reason I'm, I'm sort of adding this interpretation of scenic is that Chutesbury, in my opinion, doesn't have a lot of view sheds. We, it's difficult to see out and away from our roads. It's very rare. You go across the river up to Ashfield, Conway, Shelburne, Buckland. I mean, you get, you get dramatic vistas from the roads out across the hills, across fields. It's nothing like, nothing like here. So I don't really think we have view sheds. We have forests. And I, I think we love our forests and our forested lined roads and we should just acknowledge that that's. I, I, I think we love our forests and our forested lined roads and we should just acknowledge that that's, that's enough in.
Yeah. I, I think it's, yeah, I, I think just, you know, for this purpose, thinking about, you know, some kind of zoning or zoning response to it, you know, I mean, because it's gonna be a balance. You know, one could say it's exclusionary zoning if you don't let people build houses. On the other hand, you want to preserve green space. Um, so but I think, when I think about an overlay district, you're, you're basically designating a part of town. And I would agree, we don't have like, you know, there's those places on, on 202 as you're coming north where it says scenic overview. We don't have anything like that. We don't have a, you know, we don't have a beautiful, um, set of barns that are standing on a hillside. So I sort of agree with Jeff. It's got, if we just say zoning regulations or zoning's zoning response, we can figure out what that means without getting legal trouble and having some effective, um, response to what we're trying to get at.
Well, you know, one thing, as we're talking about this, one thing I'm thinking is probably the most iconic road in town, in my opinion, is the S-curves. Um, and there are houses along there, but it's, you know, largely wooded, um, but it is it doesn't have grand views, but it is a pretty striking and lovely road.
And there's a stream that flows along it. Yeah, it's charming.
Yeah. I mean, part of it is you can't build where the stream is. I mean, it's sort of already protected.
On one side.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would, I would just add to this discussion. Several years ago, we had small discussion about scenic roads and, um, um, there was a, there was a lot of pushback from highway people.
From, from what perspective, Deacon?
It would limit their ability to, uh, it would limit their ability to do what they wanted. Pardon?
The, the pushback from, from what? The, the town highway department?
Well, yeah, basically Merrill.
Wow, okay.
Wait, she's not on the highway department.
That's right.
So from the perspective of safety or ease of maintaining or what, what were the concerns?
I can't remember it very well, but, but I just remember that, that there was some hoo-ha and, and we gave up.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, th- this action item says assess. And Jeff, can you send me, um, some language on this one too?
Uh, wait a minute, I
Maybe it's Michael who needs to send me some language on expanding, um, beyond scenic roads overlay zoning district.
Sure. I don't think it's much language, but I could send you something.
Okay.
All right. So, so Penny, you already have what I suggested and, and that's okay too.
And, and what was that? Oh, yes. And the definition, I, I think I did get that down.
Okay, great.
Okay. Can I say something?
Of course.
Um, I have, I don't know if this would apply in any way shape or form, but I'm thinking about bikes in all of this and how much our roads are used by bikers as well from within and without of the community. And I don't know if that would add any legitimacy to what's being asked for grants in the future or anything like that.
Actually, I think there's something about that way down, way down someplace.
Yeah, it's in C3.
D3, yeah.
All right.
And that's the, the, the next and final place where a planning board appears, I believe.
I think, although there's, um, uh, there is
There's another A6, but it doesn't really
Which is, conduct a landscape inventory to identify landscapes, vistas, stone walls, cellar holes, millworks, stone structures, et cetera, for priorities.
I don't think that's really us.
Section. You don't? Okay, well.
I mean, I think you're right. The historic commission's probably the lead. I mean, it can be shared with us, but I don't think we have much to contribute.
Yeah. Well, this one has many groups enlisted. It's historic commission, Concom, select board, open space and planning board.
You know, you might want to put the CPC in there.
But would they be involved in an inventory?
Um, no, but maybe they could pay for it.
They may have to pay for it, right. But, yeah, okay. Um, so Michael, what do you think about putting the CPC in there as?
Just dandy.
Okay, okay. They are added.
You do have the CPA as a potential funding source, so.
Yeah, that's why I was saying the CPC should be like, at least engaged in that process.
Okay. Okay, now, let's zoom down.
So I can speak to this, this last one, the C3, improved pedestrian access and safety. It's sort of, it's, it's come up in the CPC discussions, but also, um, I think I've so, since, because I wrote the complete streets, policy stuff for the select board. And part of it was, part of it was to explore more walkability in town, but I think, uh, you know, Ashley's point that complete streets looks at, um, more expanded transportation beyond cars. So it includes bicyclists, includes pedestrians. And so having more walkability or bikeability in town, definitely something, you know, and there's, there's probably a role for the planning board in that. Um, in terms of um, encouraging certain kinds of development. Um, so I think it, I think it does make sense. Um, and it, it just
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, it, it looks like it's, it, it does show up in the MVP and the complete streets, um, documentation.
Right. Um, as the, the person who spearheaded this, who do you see as the prime mover to make this happen? Do you think the groups listed?
Well, the, so, the one that I would, I would include the CPC because last year, one of the conversations we had and I, you know, the CPC has been basically reactive. So we wait for people to come to us and we had a conversation about how about the CPC suggests some ideas, um, and to see if the town likes it. And the example that I had proposed was, you know, if the library was going on to O32, could you actually create a walking path from the school through the woods to the library? So that kids weren't walking up Levert Road. Um, it would be transformative in terms of both kids and parents' experience. Um, so I think, you know, and there could be some money from the CPC to do something like that. So I just think that they would I don't know if they're the lead. I think the select board would be the lead, but I would include the CPC.
Okay. No, I, you know, I'm very much in favor of, of investigating that. Would be a, a very cool thing. Okay, is that the end of the things that I, we have listed it for the planning board. I don't know if any of you saw other topics that you'd like to be part of, or if you have other things that, um, we didn't think of to put down as a, an objective or an action. Going once? Going twice? Sold?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you lack for, for, for items and things to do, Penny. This is, this is pretty ambiguous. Yeah.
Well, you know, that's the point. Um, from the last plan, not very much was done. I'm hoping, uh, we, we actually have many fewer items than the last plan had. Probably less than, less than half as many. And so, um, you know, I'm optimistic that some things will, will get done.
Yeah.
Hard in a town with mostly volunteers doing all the work, but um, no, I think, I think there are some very doable things in here.
Yeah. So Deacon?
Yes.
Would it be okay to, that we sort of go into MVP before people's eyeballs pop up?
I think that's great.
Great. And I asked Penny just if she would hover, just, Jeff?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have about 15 more minutes.
Oh, no.
Yep, I, I, I can't go late tonight. So, um, if, 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 if you guys want me to report on anything before
You should do that.
Minutes have elapsed. Yeah.
I, I, I withdraw my thing. I want to hear what your report is.
Okay, um, yeah. All right. So, let's see, I was hoping Deacon would prompt me, but my report is, there, there were a number of things that I was gonna talk to Donna McNichol and Bob Ritchie about. Uh, I, I did meet with Donna in person and Bob on the phone. Um, let's see, Donna and I met personally and then Bob and I talked afterwards. And one of the things that we talked about was the, um, Amicus brief, possibly on the, um, the Tracer Lane solar case that the Supreme Judicial Court has taken up. There was some talk of generating a, um, a, a brief from Chutesbury, possibly authored by our town council and perhaps bringing other towns in. Um, I talked with Donna about this. She, she, she does not have the, um, the interest in doing that or, or, or the time. Um, and she said that would be a lot of hours because, you know, if she was gonna do it before legal citations, it would require a lot of research. So she wasn't interested in that. The, um, the other thing she and I talked about is that the, um, Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, MMLA, which she's a member of, is, um, um, thinking about doing a, um, a brief itself. And, um, I've been trying to get ahold of Bob Ritchie to find out where they're at with that. He just moved, so he's been a little bit, uh, out of commission, but that was what Donna's recommendation was to support the efforts of the MMLA. Um, the, the other option is to do a pro se type Amicus brief. And, you know, that's an Amicus brief not written by lawyers, so it would be written in a different style. Um, you know, that's possible. I, I don't know how effective that would be, but anyway, that was the conclusion that, um, she and I reached from there. Mostly it was that she wasn't interested in doing it.
Jeff, can I ask you a follow-up question? If the Mass Municipal Lawyers folks do it, do, do you know or could you find out if towns could sort of like, sign onto, onto that? So it's like from them, but we're sort of stepping up and saying, yes, thank you, we support you? So there's a little more heft in terms of geographic representation?
I, I can ask about that. Yep. That's on my list of things to, uh, to talk to Bob about next time I talk to him. So, yeah, I, I can ask if there's an ability for towns to sign on.
And just so you know, there's, I ended up last week talking to, um, it's a subcommittee of the Wendell Planning Board that's like tagged to think about solar or something. And I was, I was explaining the SJC thing to them and they said, well, if your town council does it, we'd love to sign on. So that's what made me think about it, that if the Mass Municipal is doing it, there's probably other towns who would like to sort of put their name at the bottom of that list.
Yeah. Okay.
Cool.
The, the other thing that, um, let's see, we talked about
The, the AG.
Yep. The, the other thing that we, yeah, um, that we sort of like got to the bottom of was what's the approach to take with our associate members and the fact that the Attorney General rejected um, all the duties that we had assigned to them as possible, other than special permit. And we don't agree with that. Donna doesn't agree with that. Bob doesn't agree with that. Um, but, um, Donna and I, after talking with it, about it for a while, felt a, a more profitable course might be to, um, um, draft some legislation and, um, and, um, put it in through our senator or representative um, that would correct the problem and essentially make the planning board alternate. Which is the same as the, uh, zoning board of appeals, no, the planning board associate, the same as the zoning board of appeals alternate language. And in there, there's no limitation on what a ZBA alternate may do. Um, and, and really, there's no good reason why that has to be the case in the planning board. So it might be a bill that would, would sail through and not be controversial. So that was Donna's recommendation was that instead of doing the AG thing, um, we do it the legislative way. Um, I also was on a webinar, um, the, the MMLA sponsored webinar um, that had, um, Margaret Hurley on it, who was the, uh, Assistant Attorney General who rejected our bylaw. And I asked her the question, I said, well, what's a town do if we really don't agree with your, um, with your ruling? And, you know, you're striking part of our, our bylaw. And her response was, well, you can take us to court. So, it, it didn't signify to me that they were open to being questioned as to, uh, as, as to what they had, uh, what they had decided. So that kind of reinforced that maybe the legislative way, just fix the problem, um, universally, um, might be a better approach.
Jeff, if we did the legislative approach, who, who would, um, sort of approach Joe and Natalie with their requests as a select board or the planning board? Did Donna have a recommendation?
Um, this would be something that the select board, I don't think would have any problem with. If, if they have, if they have more weight, then perhaps they could do it, um, they and the planning board. Um, I, I, I think you know them.
Oh, I do, yeah.
Yeah. Um, it, it's easy to write, it's very easy to write, simple, um, easy to write and easy to explain. So, yeah, and, and, and I can't see, I can't see any objection to it. I just don't understand where objection will come from.
Maybe the first step would be to just sort of update the select board. Um, and let them know that this is our recommendation, if it is in fact our recommendation, which I support.
Yep.
And who would do the easy writing?
Me.
Me.
This is good.
I, I, I love that kind of drafting. It, we, we could do it together. It would be very easy.
Yeah. Is everyone good with that?
So, yeah, it does seem like, uh, before we got real far with the drafting, following up on your notion of being in touch with the select boards probably.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's definitely the first step. Um, I mean, if, if everyone's good with it, I can just contact the select board and maybe Jeff and I can get on their dance card.
Okay. I would imagine concurrently if, uh, I mean, I assume like the language is, um, is gonna be taken from, uh, the general laws pertaining to the zoning board of appeals associate members and just gonna rename it planning board instead of zoning board of appeals and, uh, send that off to, uh, the, uh, state reps, right? So, I mean
Yeah, I think the language would be like, whatever the chapter section is for associate members for planning boards, it would be strike that and substitute with, you know, the new language, which would be parallel to the ZBA language. Um, that would be my gut.
Yeah. Might have to get rid of something in, in, um, 489 special permit that is confusing, but
Robert, you look so comfortable.
Robert's down.
Right as he said that, his screen flashed. I thought he was just like, end video.
He's really standing up. He just turned his computer.
It's a Walmart, yeah.
All right. So, so that's really all we got to the bottom of. The, the, the other, um, there, there were a, a couple other quick topics. Um, one has to do with the, the planning boards and on board conversations we've been having. And I still haven't, uh, we didn't get to that. So, um, I'll have to figure that out. You know, what's the best way to handle the, um, expansion of, um, of non-conforming cottages at the lake? So I haven't gotten to that yet.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. Um, Chuck's on, uh, on board for January 10.
Yeah. Um, I'll keep working on I'll keep working on that one.
Okay. I know you brought up to me a cell tower update.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. It was my suggestion. I don't know if everybody's aware of the cell tower that we approved on, on Wendell Road. Couple of years ago, it's going in, the roadway is in, or the driveway. I'm not sure where that stands. I've been told they, they don't have a building permit yet or a curb cut permit. But I'm not sure about that. And just wondering what the planning board's interest is in, in possibly monitoring that project a little bit as it, as it goes forward. I mean, there, there were some very specific plans and then we do have some conditions that we put on that.
Well, if there are conditions we put on it, then we should probably monitor it. Because what I learned yesterday is the concrete pads are also in for the, for the, you know, for the tower.
Uh huh. Okay. So has anybody heard anything about building permits?
No.
Penny told me she didn't think they'd obtained a building permit or a curb cut permit.
I can tell you, they certainly don't have one posted. I know the Conservation Commission did a site visit and found no wetlands issues. I haven't looked this week to see if it's been issued. It hadn't been issued last week. And I, I think the highway department holds curb cut permits. Did Miriam leave the meeting?
Yes.
She did. Last time I talked to Miriam, the Conservation Commission had not signed off on a curb cut permit. So I don't know if one has been issued. I would be surprised if it has.
So Penny, they came to the ConCon because they'd applied for a building permit, right?
Well, the because, no, well, sort of. Because they applied for a building permit, the ConCon was notified that and a building permit application had been requested. And so the Conservation Commission got in touch with the, the construction company. And you know, it's high and dry. There are no wetlands there. So
Right.
If, if, I believe if a curb cut permit, what application was handed to the Conservation Commission, they would sign off on it. But the highway department also has to sign off on it.
It seems like, I mean, I would agree with Steve that, you know, we should do some kind of monitoring and so reviewing the conditions and then reaching out to them and scheduling a site visit, just, just for good protocol. It seems like we should, you know, make, be making sure that things are going the way they should be.
And, and what's the recourse if, it's not a condition, a building permit, you know, is more fundamental than a condition. So if they don't have it, how do we learn whether they have a building permit or not?
I can look it up. I, I can look it up on the, my ConCon computer. And I, I'll leave your meeting and go, go look it up right now and see.
And just while, before you leave, then if they do not have a building permit, what's the, what's the course of action and who takes that?
I think you notify the building inspector.
Isn't a cease and desist kind of thing?
Yeah. I think, I think typically the building inspector comes out and does whatever they do to stop work.
Well, we're about a month, we're about a month behind a cease and desist, Michael. There's an awful lot of work that's.
Oh yeah, I guess that's, well, I always mean they just stop doing whatever they're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you know, enforcement action of some sort.
Honestly, I don't know what the building inspector has in his or her bag of tools for that. So I'm going to leave your meeting. Thanks for all your time talking with me about open space. And if you, if you want more fun, come to the public forum on Thursday night. And I'll go down and see if the building permit has been issued. Bye.
Bye Penny. All right. I have to go. I'm sorry.
Before you go, before you go, you need to like explain to everybody why you knew about this planning board meeting well in advance. You know, they take at least, until they go at least until nine o'clock. So explain to Deacon why you have to leave.
Cause I've been at every planning board meeting for 25 years.
Deacon, is that an acceptable answer to you?
I'm afraid it's going to have to be. I mean.
Okay. Good night, everyone. I'm sorry, Michael. I don't mean to disrespect the MVP. I'm just, just out of time.
That's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll suffer through the, the, you know, the hurt feelings.
Mr. Chairman, Deacon.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm afraid I'm going to have to duplicate Jeff's notice. I'm, I'm feeling pretty sick and I think I'm going to leave the meeting.
Okay. I, I'm just getting over something myself.
Okay. No one else can leave though, because then we won't have a quorum. But thankfully we have two associate members. So, oh, but they can't make the quorum because of the Attorney General.
We have a quorum. We have.
We'll have a quorum. We have four.
Yeah.
Okay. So you guys have power. So.
Robert, well, feel better, Bob.
Okay. So should I jump into MVP before we, uh, the attrition.
Before somebody else drops off?
Yeah.
Meeting for all right now.
Yeah.
I, I do want to say that, that we have to do minutes tonight. Yeah, let's, let's do that right now.
No, no.
But we gotta do them.
Okay.
Do the minutes. Let's do the minutes and adjourn.
Okay. So.
I know. I mean, I, yeah.
It's, I'll do it quickly. So did everyone get, I, I sent out again, sort of the excerpted list of the MVP. And so the short version is that, you know, I guess it was a year, it was August 2020, whatever that was, a year plus ago. We completed the MVP report, which is part of the planning grant, and that identified high priority, medium priority, low priority projects for the town based on municipal vulnerability preparedness in terms of climate and adaptation. So this, we've been waiting, and that was a planning grant. We've been waiting for the state to release action grants, which is where you can get money to do stuff based on your planning grant and things are identified. So I guess it was about maybe two weeks ago, the select board agreed that they wanted to go forward with an action grant. What's exciting is that the last action grant round, so last year, there was like 200 plus towns and cities that got action grant money, which was a huge step up. I think the year prior is maybe like 40 or 50. And so with the federal infrastructure money, and if we ever get to build back better, this gets going to be a lot of money for the next year or two in terms of this kind of stuff. And so because we're poised and, you know, we don't have to do the planning grant anymore, we're poised to get an action grant, the select board wants to go forward. And they are reaching out to the different committees to find out what the priorities are that the committees want to do. So they can get the input and then they're going to decide in the next week or two. The first step in applying is an expression of interest, which is like a letter of intent. It's really pretty straightforward. It's technically due on February 14th, but in the announcement, they said, if you get it in by, I think, January 21st, it's preferred. And it's considered a rolling basis. So the select board's shooting for that third week in January. So what I was suggesting is we look at the highest priority items, which is really sort of what I think the select board was interested in. And what I'm, so there's, I guess, two ways to think about it. One is projects that involve the planning board specifically, and there's a few of them. Or just looking at all the high priority items and the planning board can say, well, as a planning board, it doesn't involve us, but we think this is important. So we support that. So there's sort of two ways to go. And then the last thing I would just say, because in my opinion, it feels like this is a chance to sort of get some significant money that rather than sort of doing a small incremental project, that we either do something that's systematic, like how I was talking about stormwater, you know, that we could approach it as we want to adjust the theme of stormwater, and it could be different component parts within that. So hire a consultant for regulations, do an inventory of culverts, you know, you could do different things that are in the report. Or do something that's costly. That's just a one big, you know, project. So that's sort of my thinking. I don't know if people have thoughts if they've read it or how you, I don't think it has to be a long conversation, but I didn't want to go back to the select board not having solicited ideas or input.
Michael, quick question. Does the letter of intent that you're saying they would like to see by January 21st, does that require a specific project to be identified in that letter?
Um, roughly speaking, I mean, it's, you know, you can, you don't have to get detailed. It's, it's not a proposal. But you'd have to say sort of, we want to do the stormwater with these components, or we want to update the master plan. You know, there has to be
Okay.
Some kind of focus.
We do need a subject or, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll do it here. I'll just go, the things that I identified in the high priority that directly impact the planning board is update the town's master plan to address a full range of zoning related climate change mitigation and adaptation issues. You know, so when the master plan was done in 2008, I think it was, climate wasn't even on the radar. So there's nothing in there about that. There's also, and this came up with Penny's discussion, establish regulatory review process for future developments to address impermeable cover and management of stormwater. So that could be us. Like the other thing that Penny brought up, assess green infrastructure opportunities for stormwater management, review town regulations and update necessary to support green infrastructure. And then the last, I guess there's two more that planning board, work with the planning board and select board to ensure the commercial development remains appropriate to town to fund. Sets and does not lead to forest degradation. So that's another one. And then the last one is support incentives that allow for individual homeowners to have self-sufficiency off the grid solar and explore potential regulatory barriers, incentivize battery storage, so that a home of solar installations can still provide power during an outage. So those are, you know, they're all regulatory things that would be planning board specific. You know, as opposed to something like conduct a field inventory of culverts and bridges, which is important, but is not within our, you know, our wheelhouse. So any of those kinds of things strike you in any particular way?
I think the two that strike me at least are the ones that dovetail with the open space report, because I think we get the most mileage out of that by dovetailing those two or piggybacking those two.
Okay.
And, and then I, I don't quite know how the master plan relates to those other, or could or would relate to those two items. Green infrastructure and the first one you mentioned.
Yeah. Okay. I think it it could, you know, I, my, my thought is, I mean, the master plan's big. You know, and I know Nathan and I have talked about it in the past and like, you know, if the solar stuff happens, there's no way in hell we can do a master plan. You know? But I think if we were able to do a master plan, then some of the stuff about how do we prioritize and look at the town and sort of incentivize, that, that could show up in a master plan because you, we could start by saying that climate mitigation adaptation is important to the town. And then it leads into this other regulatory stuff. So there's a role for it. They're sort of connected, but it's a big project.
So what if we, what if we tried something a little less ambitious and we tackled something like green infrastructure, which would actually be a subset of a master plan if we ever, if we can, we do that later when we know we can tackle it. Meaning if we try to tackle it now, we get derailed because of the solar projects, we're kind of screwed. But if we tackle something less ambitious and then this, depending on what happens with those solar projects, we say, okay, we can handle the master plan now.
Okay. Nathan, you were going to say something, I think.
I was just going to say, uh, yeah, I like the regulatory review process for future developments. You know, for stormwater runoff and the green infrastructure opportunities for stormwater management. I think those are both good areas to prioritize. I, I think just, you know, generally speaking, it, it kind of makes the most sense. There's also another one on there that's not really, you don't have highlighted, but I kind of like, which is, uh, conduct strategic planning to support the agricultural community. I mean, and it's like, you know, we don't have like a huge agricultural contingent in town.
Almost none.
What's that?
It's almost nonexistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's actually, it was in the moderate one. And I, I think I didn't highlight it only because it wasn't what they were thinking, I think is less about regulatory stuff. Like there was educating farmers and gardeners about adaptation measures.
Well, that was one, not that one.
Okay. There's another one in the high?
Well, no, it's, it's still moderate. You know, the, the one, there's one that's educate owners of private gardens, but this is conduct strategic planning to support the agricultural community.
Yeah, it's right above that one.
Climate change, heavy precipitation, drought, extreme temperature. There's another one relating to pest management too, that could be interesting. But I mean, point is, is I mean, you know, honestly, my thinking on that, in, you know, in addition to the resiliency aspect of it, could, you know, I don't know if it's something that could potentially, you know, dovetail with increasing tax revenue for the town.
Which one?
The agriculture one, which I mean, that, that's kind of like, uh, you know, possibly not really feasible. I, I understand that, but I, I just saw it and you know, that'd be something. It's something that's, you know, like if the, I mean, if the town kind of like supports something that like enables people to, you know, put up greenhouses or some sort of structure where they can do agricultural work. You know, it might be, you know, like increase the taxability of a property. You know, if they're doing better, then the town is doing a little bit better. I don't know if that's something that could work that way. That's, that was, that was my thinking on that.
Yeah. Well, it is interesting. I mean, riffing off of that, there's the, one of the ones I read, support incentives that allow for individual homeowners to have self-sufficiency. And you know, written in there is incentivize battery storage, but if you expand the definition of self-sufficiency to include agriculture, that, that might actually be something we could encourage. You know, so broadly speaking, self-sufficiency.
Yeah.
But.
I would think that green infrastructure relates to that.
Okay.
And it's a little broader than individual homeowner.
No, I mean, absolutely. The green infrastructure stuff I think is definitely, I would say would be our number one, the green infrastructure and the, the regulations around development stuff.
Okay. So Deacon, Jake, Ashley, do you guys have anything you want to?
I'm very impressed by the stormwater. It seems to me that every time we're, we're confronted with a permit situation, the biggest aspects of it turn out to have to do with controlling the runoff. I mean, we, it's, I mean, I'm not sure that's separate from green infrastructure, but.
No, it's actually part of, it's, it's the same thing. Assess green infrastructure opportunities for stormwater management. So it's, you're connected at the hip.
Yeah, yeah. This seems huge to me.
Yeah. I mean, Steve, I know, I get that you're saying green infrastructure separate from.
Not, not separate. It's like an umbrella for some of these other things we're talking about.
Yeah.
It comes under green. It can come under green infrastructure. And so I think if you're looking for a subject to identify in the letter of intent, you can use green infrastructure and give it a little bit more detail with some of these other items.
Right. Okay. That's a good idea. Cool. Ashley, Jake, anything you want to jump in on? Okay. Well, this is good.
Just a footnote on a slightly different subject. Penny, just put a note in front of me saying the cell tower building permit was issued last week.
Okay.
Keep in mind, construction was started at least a month ago, but so somebody must have gotten the idea that maybe they did need a building permit.
Always a good thing. Well, if it's okay with you guys, I'll take what we just discussed and I'll, I think I'll email Rita, but I'll, I'll attend whatever the pertinent select board meeting is, just sort of. I think I'll email Rita, but I'll I'll attend whatever the pertinent select board meeting is, just sort of chime in on behalf of the planning board, if that's okay. See how it goes. Thank you.
Good. Well, let's move on to the minutes. I read the nine thirteen revised minutes from from Nathan. I called him about one very minor correction, and other than that, I was I was perfectly happy. Yeah, I'm I'm good with it, too. I mean, I I've seen these, I guess, corrections, adjustments to it.
Yeah, well, let me, I'll move to approve the minutes. It's September thirteenth, two thousand twenty one.
I'll second. Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I just I just want to know the the change that Deacon is talking about was in the section on the Wheelock site visit report, I had a sentence that started acknowledges the fact that the wildflower meadow is a condition of the special permit, but notes that successfully meeting this condition may be difficult because of the type of soil site and that adding soil amendments to achieve a wildflower meadow is not a condition of the permit. Yeah. I put Lacy's name in there in front of it because that that sentence was missing a noun there. I think initially I'd had the, you know, the board acknowledges. And, you know, I think Deacon correctly pointed out to me that it was it was Jeff that mentioned.
What page are you on, Nathan?
It's it would be page one.
Oh.
Wheelock site visit, it's the second sentence in that paragraph, the second line. I can share my screen if that helps.
I I mean, I have I have your notes in front of me. I I can I can see it. I mean, if other people.
Ashley, were you trying to look at it, Ashley? You're good. Okay. If anyone needs to see it, let me know. So that's it. Unless anyone else have anything else. I think we're good to vote.
Yeah, so up, so no more discussion. I'll call the roll. Okay, okay, Nathan?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
I'm an I, got the quorum, good. In ten four. That's the that's the meeting with the select board.
Okay. So I'll move to approve the minutes of October fourth, two thousand twenty one.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so in terms of discussion, we really don't have much flexibility in amending these because otherwise it'd be a headache.
Yeah, I mean, we we could amend them. I can, you know, I can
Do we want to?
Document and I can take the part that pertains to the joint meeting and any tweaks we need to make, I could do it. I just looked at, I mean, you know, there was, there was something I said in there that I mean, I I would have worded it maybe a little different, but I said, you know what, this kind of captures you know, that there was something that was said there and, you know, it's not a transcript, but you know, it gets the idea across and that's fine. If anyone has a stick about it, we can, we can talk about it more. Otherwise, I would just, if we approve it now, I would submit it to Gray so that it is posted next to the planning board link in the in the meeting history.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good with it, too. Okay, so I'll discussion over. Okay, I'll call the roll. Nathan?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
I'm an I, good. And and ten twelve.
Yeah, so it's not what ten two, it's ten twelve, okay.
That's a, that's my fault.
Okay.
Most of the, most of the, most of it uses the ten twelve date, but that's.
This is also with this, the select board.
No, this is the one with the 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 zoning board.
It says October twelfth, two thousand twenty one.
We just approved, I think.
Oh, okay.
So now we're actually going back to.
Yeah, you're right, right.
You're right.
Okay.
Is everyone clear on what we just approved?
Yes.
We just had the wrong date.
Yeah.
So with October fourth one, what's the story behind that? Have we seen that before? I'm just, I wasn't, I wasn't able to find it.
That was the one you put out, Michael.
Oh, I did. Oh, that's maybe why I was looking, I sorted by Nathan. I assume everything comes from Nathan. So, okay, well, then it's, I'm good with it.
I would hope so, Michael.
Really?
No, that was the one Lisa Stratford did and you.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm totally good with that one. Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes of October fourth, two thousand twenty one.
I'll second. Okay. In discussion? Everybody.
Minutes.
Okay. Okay, I'll call the roll. Nathan? Michael?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
I'm an I.
So Deacon, we have six minutes. Can I squeeze in the last item?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I I'm, I can't actually remember if I sent this to everybody. I know I sent it to Deacon to say, can we talk about it? But you so you might not have seen it. Have you guys seen the this proposed battery bylaw?
I have not.
No, I didn't send it to you. Okay, well, we can do it next time, but I'll just, I'll tell you what it is. So somewhere in the last six months as part of like the AMP discussions, Rita had mentioned the idea of having a separate battery bylaw. And then in conversations with some folks like in the southeast who are dealing with really big battery installations, it's become an issue. And then looking at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, you know, in the their model bylaws, their model of solar stuff, of which our bylaws seen as a really good thing. They suggested addressing batteries, just because like all the smart projects going forward are required to have batteries. So like with Wheelock, we didn't have a bylaw. So, you know, the planning board sort of figured it out as we went. It seems like if we know that any solar project coming forward is going to have a battery, it'd be good to have a bylaw that's in place. The thing that I thought of, and I think I talked to Jeff about this, I can't remember, was to just have a standalone battery bylaw, so it doesn't matter what the generation sock source is. So it could be wind. It could be solar, you know, it could be something else we haven't thought about yet. But the idea is that, you know, batteries, you know, there's, there is a potential for fire because the current batteries are lithium ion and they're, you know, they're big, as we discussed with the the Wheelock edition. So I can send it to you, but it seemed like if we know that every smart funded project is going to have a battery, we might want to get ahead of it. And also thinking about just solar generation, because it is one of, it's it's more of a volatile component than just say the arrays. So I can just leave it there and send it to you, and then we can see if we want to go forward with it or not.
And what so a Schutzhub battery bylaw would cover what stuff that's not covered by state or federal regulation?
I I don't think there is any state regulations at this point. Yeah. I mean, all the, all the, it's, you know, it's sort of not surprising, but SMART says in order to get SMART subsidies, you have to have a battery, but they don't say anything about what the batteries system has to be. You know, so I took what I wrote up really sort of riffed off of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission recommendations. And it include, you know, what's the required document, the categories are required documentations. So materials, safety data sheets, plans for inspection, servicing, et cetera, and then safety environmental standards. So, you know, the environment, safety environmental, it's, there's about noise, because apparently there's, you know, fans for heating and cooling. There's paintings that they're they blend in. There's information about first responders for emergencies.
Blend in on a solar farm?
Well, you know, it's sort of like how we wanted to have the fencing around the whole thing, so it wasn't orange, that kind of thing.
You know, energy storage device could be installed somewhere that's not on a solar farm.
Yeah, no, the thing in the southeast, they have battery farms now. I mean, I was, if they're they're huge, they're like two hundred and fifty units of batteries in the southeast, like southeast mass. So they're becoming a thing. And, you know, hard, hard to say if Schutzhub would get that, but.
You know, like, for example, they this, they might try to install one down at the transfer station.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Right.
And that's what, and that's why I think having it separate from generation and just have it be a battery, you know, by law by itself would make sense, but great point, Nathan.
Yeah, so this is, you know, probably another conversation I would not participate in. But I'll I'll touch base with HR. I mean, obviously, special permanent applications for battery storage devices or energy storage devices would definitely be a no go for me.
Nathan, couldn't, couldn't you be part of the, based on your experience, part of the discussion, but just recuse yourself from voting?
Well, I'm I'm also would not be part of a debate. So do, you know.
But here's, here's my question. I understand the debate. But can't you share your experience, your knowledge with the planning board without crossing the line?
Well, that's why I I would, I would need to talk to HR. And, you know, I mean, I can't, I can't go outside the box. I have to.
No, I understand.
So, I mean, you know, it is, you know, they Yeah, I mean, I don't know will they come down, but I suspect I won't be able to, you know, participate in discussions that would be for the purpose of crafting a bylaw amendment that dealt with energy storage devices. I'll talk to them about it and confirm whether or not that's true. And and I'll ask if there's any kind of public role I would be able to play in just discussions of the subject matter, for for example.
Well, I'll send it to you, then you can bring it to the, you can bring it to them and say, how's, you know, is this within the lines or outside of the lines?
Yeah, no, I'll 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 run it up and see what they say, you know, I mean, I just, you know, this would be a thing where I I just need to check in with them and say, hey, you know, this is something we'd be look at, you know. What do you think? And they'll let me know.
And and Michael, you're going to send this bylaw around?
Yeah, I'll send it by, you know, tomorrow, the next day at the latest.
And the one last question, and we don't have to answer it now, but we can deal deal with the next meeting. It's not, this isn't something that can be handled by conditions attached to a special permit.
It can. I, you know, my my thinking was that twofold. One is that rather, just like I think, you know, Jeff said he, you know, you wouldn't want to relive Wheelock of sort of figuring it out as you go. That if we have it in place, then it's just there. And then I think the other part is having it separate from whatever project or generation source. So it's just sort of known that if we're going to do batteries in town, this is what the rules of the road are.
Okay.
So I will send it. Thank you, Deacon.
Oh, well, thank you. I I'm assuming there's no unanticipated business, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay, so that Michael made the motion and Nathan seconded or or the other way around?
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, as long as Michael gets it right in the minutes. Thank you, Michael. I really appreciate you stepping in to do this tonight, you know.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I was, Deacon wanted to talk about this, but I was suggesting that we maybe pay a minute taker, not a land clerk. If we can't hire this person the next day or two, that maybe we talk about paying someone, like when I was on school committee, we had someone who just took the minutes. That might be an approach, but we can talk about it next time. Unless Deacon hires this person.
Well, there there was, I went to a meeting today and there was a woman applying. Her references need to be checked out. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be easier to just, you know, the pain is the minute taking, at least for now. You know, we get a special permit, that's a whole different ballgame, but it'd be easy to, easier to get someone just to take minutes that's reliable. And then we can, you know, if we get a land clerk, that'd be the better solution.
Certainly would. Well, I I'll you have to, do we have any discussion about the motion to adjourn?
I think we just had it.
Okay.
Call the roll, Deacon.
Distracted. Nathan?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
I'm in a good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Okay, so thanks for hanging in there, Jake and Ashley.
Good night.
Good seeing you.